Welcome everybody to the Thursday informational meeting, February the third. Um, we'll start off with the invocation placed by Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would, bow your head. Most heavenly gracious God, Lord, we come to you this morning and Father, we just ask you and we beseech you, Father, to show us the proper ways that you, that would be pleasing to you to do the business of this county. We pray, Father, for any of the sick and the people that have lost loved ones in this time. And we pray, God, that you would give them a peace. And, Lord, we just ask that as we go forward in this meeting, you would give us the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that would be pleasing to you. Father, we thank you for everything that you are and all that you have given us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't run away with the pit, Tom Brady.
No.
Uh, Commissioner McClure, if you would kindly do the veterans' recognition?
We have started a recognition of any veterans that are with us this morning. Any veterans here? Well, alrighty, we'll dispense with that.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Um, please register if you're interested in speaking at the public address. I'd like to have a motion to excuse Commissioner Trull. And if you heard anything from Chris?
I have not.
I have not, sir.
Okay. And Commissioner, uh, Elliott?
So moved.
Okay. A motion second.
Can we do this verbally, sir?
All in favor? Uh, okay. We'll move on to adoption of agenda. Ms. Smith has asked that resolution clarifying the powers and duties of the Davis County Board of Equalization and Review be added as Agenda Item 7E. And Senior Services has asked that approval of contract between Senior Planner and Senior Services be added as Agenda Item 7F. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Not, may I have a motion second to adopt amended agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second. You have a motion, Commissioner Watford, second. Then Commissioner Shaw, cast your vote. Is there anyone registered? Ms. Martin?
Mr. Chairman, nobody's registered.
And all of these votes are in and that motion here is a five vote, a five seat.
Okay, so there's no one registered speaking.
Yes, sir.
Public address. We will move on to deliberation discussion on potential topics for the annual budget planning session. Ms. Smith, we leave this off?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, you have at your places, I believe, um, Madam Clerk handed it out here this morning. Let me get it pulled up here. A listing of, uh, what we're calling potential topics for the retreat. It's that time of the year again where we go through and, uh, talk about a lot of things. Our, uh, our finances, some of our priorities for not just the upcoming year, but for several years out. Um, so you've got a list there of what, what I have or what I've heard as potential topics. Um, let me just go down real quick. And what I'm looking for this morning is since the retreat is almost a month to the day today, if there's anything else we need, that staff needs to be taking a look at, we can add to this list, give us some time to prepare. We, um, we're going to present the audit at the, uh, at the retreat. It's going to be the first item up. It's usually done in January. We're a little bit behind. That'll get brought up at the, that day at the, uh, presentation. Um, we're going to go through our finances, what I call general fund finances. You won't spend a lot of time with the other funds, but we do that in the major projects for the next five years. We always have that as a topic. We're, we're expecting to have some preliminary results for this pay study, year number four, the compression piece. I'm going to sit down with a cog here in the next week or so and I should have something to show and tell for that. I may not have it completely done, but I'll have something I can at least, um, present. And then we've got what we call planning and zoning issues. We've got some text amendments, uh, that we need to bring forth to the board. And then a discussion is what I'll call it. Um, Commissioner Yates brought this up at one of the last, uh, planning and zoning hearings about, you know, our growth. And I call it smart growth or making a committee, but just a, a good conversation about our growth. We've had some of this before with lot sizes and things like that. But as we move down the line with this sewer and if we acquire gallons, I think we are going to have to have a good conversation about what do we want to do with those gallons? How do we want to dispersion? So just, I got that on the list. Um, we're looking for, probably going to be talking about something with the opioids. Uh, we've already been in conversations with the NCACC. We know those funds are coming. They're coming, uh, I think around probably April or the spring. So talking about how we want, do we want to form a committee to take a look at making a plan of how to spend those funds? We'll get into it at the retreat a little bit. It's about twelve and a half million dollars a year over the next, what, uh, fifteen, twelve years, something like that? Eighteen years. So mathematically, a million or a little less a year. I think it's front loaded, so a few years come with a million plus a year. But I think a good plan or a good group to get together to figure out how to spend those funds is probably warranted. And then, um, I'm going to get Madam Clerk to help me at that, on that day to talk a little bit more. You've been updated just, um, through email about the bicentennial, but things that we're doing through the rest of the year. This is our bicentennial year, um, two hundredth anniversary. So I think Madam Clerk's well ahead of, uh, got a group that's taking a look at a lot of things, you know? Logos and potential events. A little tough with COVID, a little tough with people being in and out, but I think she's got some good updates. So that's all I have, uh, Mr. Chairman. And that's, that'll take up a full, once we go through all that, it doesn't look like a lot. It'll, it'll, it'll take up a good, uh, it'll take up a morning and lay a little after, so.
We publish all this stuff, uh, let's not say smart growth. That would indicate that we do dumb growth.
Good point, Commissioner McClure.
We can call it whatever we want, but we need to talk about growth.
I understand.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
If you all think of anything else after this morning, call me, do whatever, I will add it to the list. Um, again, just give me some time to, so I can be working on some things. But these are the things I know of that we've been talking about for a while that we got to get prepared.
And you would like to follow up, uh, Commissioners, if they have any questions or suggestions to give your call when this?
That'll work fine.
Work it up and for, for a date that we're going to really get down to discussing these. Okay. All right. Any, anybody have anything? If not, we're going to move on to B, under seven. Uh, performance based budgeting, PBB annual report. Uh, Mr. Martin, with you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. You should have at your places, uh, a copy of this year's annual PBB report. Um, and this is a, a presentation I enjoy doing. And, and the reason being is this is to talk about some of the good things that we've done here at the county over the last year, particularly, uh, with the ingenuity of our department heads and, and folks out there, uh, saving money in their departments. Uh, you, you will recall, this program's been around for a while. Um, this is, uh, it's an incentive program and it's a kind of a verbal understanding between the board and the department heads, um, that they are able to save, uh, bank savings in their operating budget, uh, up to eight percent of their amended operating budget each year. Uh, they're able to save and, uh, and bank for future use. Uh, so the report that you've got, and Casey and I, when we got a copy of the report, looked through this, um, I think we all, everybody that has seen this kind of went, wow, we really did some pretty amazing stuff this year. Um, some of these projects are just, they're, they're big and, and they're very, um, they're eye grabbing. Um, starting with the county manager's office, out of our savings that we had, we donated that for the animal shelter upgrades. And this is for the, the, um, the, um, canopies there over the, the area out back. Um, very, very nice, much improved over tarts on top of fences, you know? So this is a major upgrade there. EMS and the fire marshal's office, they bought drones that they've been able to use. Um, and they've been used, uh, for fires, for a number of things, uh, since they've got them. Um, the library, you'll recall, it was a four hundred twenty-one thousand dollar investment at the Lexington Library. It also included the, the, uh, completion of the new children's library there. So there's just some, some pictures there from what they've done. Uh, parks and rec, addition of, uh, playground equipment, disc golf, um, and, and that playground equipment being ADA compliant as well. Uh, senior services, the murals. Uh, some of you that are on the facilities committee will remember, it was one of the first projects I remember seeing come through, were the murals at Senior Center. Those are now in place. Um, social services, of course, the new playground right outside here, outside the governmental center. And then this report also, every year, we get to talk about some of the good things that our employees have done. Uh, Jane Keiker, who, as we all know, will be retiring soon. Um, they got, she got the GFOA award again, thirty-three years in a row, that our finance department has had the GFOA award. That's a fantastic accomplishment. Uh, our clerk, Debbie Harris, was named Clerk of the Year. Um, we got the, the budget award again, uh, GFOA budget, outstanding budget award. Uh, Dwayne Childers, who is here, lifetime, um, CLGPO, lifetime certification. That happened in the last year. Um, don't want to go through all of these, but, um, you see, there's, there's a lot to be, to be proud of, of the employees. Um, and before, and of course, we have our PBB Employee of the Year. I'll get to that in just a second. Just to kind of walk through, on page twelve of the report, this is the PBB scorecard. And you'll see the green bars and there's gray bars. The green bars are the savings from year to year, from fiscal year to fiscal year. Um, the banked for future use are the gray bars. So you'll see that right now, uh, over time, it's kind of ebbed and flowed. Uh, had been kind of trending down as money has been spent using for these great projects that are in here. It is going up a little bit this year. Um, and that is primarily, and it's something that we'll, we'll talk more about at the budget retreat, the work session for that. Uh, that's primarily driven by vacancies currently. So there's some of that, the, the lapped salary, so to speak, that comes back as savings. Uh, so that is going up a little bit. And then from the, from that point, page thirteen through the, the end of the report, gives you an idea of the reporting side. And the other portion of this that I personally like, I like the performance measurement piece of this. It's one thing to talk, you talk about output versus performance. How efficient are you at actually getting something, uh, accomplished? In the department, you see where they measure themselves, uh, based on their efficiency measures, their output measures. Um, and I believe every department this year hit their goals, which is outstanding. Um, so I have to give a, a lot of credit to the department heads. Um, their continuous focus on ongoing improvement. Uh, they've, they've done an outstanding job, the employees really have this year. So that brings me back to our, uh, PBB Employee of the Year. And our PBB Employee of the Year is Terry Myers. Uh, he is a heavy equipment and safety supervisor with Solid Waste. Um, Terry was, uh, through research on, uh, maintenance and repairs for equipment at the landfill, was able to find savings there, which typically John Deere heavy equipment, um, service technicians cost about a hundred and fifty dollars an hour and then a seventy-five dollar travel charge. He was able to, um, to find savings to the tune of about fifty-five dollars an hour on this. And ultimately saved the county twenty-five thousand dollars last year. So, uh, he is our, our PBB Employee of the Year award, and I believe Terry is here. Uh, I'd like to invite him up to, uh, present him, his plaque.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you want to say a few words.
Thank you all. I want to, uh, thank the, uh, staff at the landfill for helping me achieve this. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give him a round of applause.
One more.
Here we go. One, two, three. Couple more. Commissioner Shaw, could you move this way just a little bit? There we go. Thank you. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations, Terry. Good job. You earned it.
If I can just add one thing to Jason's statements there just for a second. This, this was my favorite PBB book this year of the seven or so I've been involved in because of the projects. When I saw pictures of what we've done, it's different to talk about them in here, but when I see them, I was kind of like, whoa, wait a minute. This stuff is.
Sounds really nice.
And, you know, we've gone, we've done a lot of things at Vance this over the years, you know, doing the PBB Employee of the Year. You know, Terry's our in-house basically OSHA guy at the landfill. And, you know, you got to have that in these areas. This report's hard to cover every little thing we do in the county, you know, it's hard. And Jason's right, you know, with folks, we put this on the web, we try to promote it. People see what they get for their money in terms of putting in tax dollars into the government, in terms of getting outcomes from us, what we're able to do. Remember the eight percent cumulative over a twenty-year period? So the way it works is it's eight percent of their budget. If they don't spend their money, they can't add to it. Any savings they get comes back to the county. Any, any redu- reduction in eight percent, it's like a glass of water. They can fill it back in. So you can't go over the eight. People ask me that all the time, you know? It's eight percent, that, that would build up for, it doesn't build up like that. The vacancies are driving some of it going up because the operating budgets don't generate, usually yield any savings. Um, and we'll talk about vacancies more at the retreat, so. Um, but I'm proud of, and our staff runs this program. We do sit down at the management level and take a look at the goals every year, evaluate whether or not they're not stringent enough or need to be, you know, or maybe this one's a little too rough. We've had that happen over the years a couple of times, where there's goals we, you know, we've had department heads who can't even hit them. So, I mean, people do, they self-manage this thing with our help. Um, and our office kind of does the administering of it, keeping track of the numbers, the balances, you know, who's doing what on their goals. But, uh, it's a total county-wide kind of effort. And I, and again, it's a covenant between the board, a unique thing in North Carolina. You don't see this a lot anymore. Um, it's a, it's a, what I call a covenant, to use an old biblical term, between the board and staff, to allow that, that four million dollars to be available, still has to come to the board to be appropriated because, remember, it's just a piece of county fund balance. That's all it is. So I just wanted to highlight some of those points, but.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can add one more thing to, uh, I think this is important for folks to know as well. There's a lot of projects that were done there. All of that was done outside of the normal budget. This is, you know, these are projects that if they want, if we wanted to do them, it would either require more taxes or reduction of existing services. The pie is the pie, you know? It can only, only be so big. So you've got to have money coming in or cut services. By the department's being innovative and doing this and having this covenant between the board and the departments, these things are able to be done and maintain the tax rate where it's at. So I think that's, that's something that, um, folks forget sometimes.
On that, on the chart?
Yes, sir.
Is, does, does the chart represent the unused, uh, funds that are available to the respective department? I'll just make sure I understood.
That's it.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right. With the bar graphs you're looking at, it's everybody added together. So the whole program generates four million dollars available amongst around twenty-six departments that they can come and do, and, you know, again, they come to the board, they're, you'll see them on budget amendments. We talk about it a lot in Facilities Committee, um, about, you know, can we use PBB for this, for that, et cetera? So we use a lot on capital. Not, we don't typically do it for staff. Matter of fact, I can't remember a time when we have done it for staff. We don't do, we try not to fund ongoing expenses with this stuff because it's not ongoing revenue that you can count on. We do capital mostly, equipment. And that's, that's why you can see in the book, it's filled full of projects, basically.
I don't know who, who decided to go this route here, but I like this. Um, this in, in association with, with the budget book is going to actually reflect itself, is going to be very helpful as a, as a, as something to steer you to where you want to go in the book to look at.
It's a good mix of enough information, not inundate you, but, but visual stuff as well. Folks like to see things. So we tried over the years to get a, not do as much numbers and hard, you know, reading, reading part of it, basically. Do more pictures, more seeing. People respond well, I do. I do it myself. When I saw them canopies, I did not realize what we were buying, what they looked like. And I got to admit, I was out there the days we put the green tarps over there. It's a dramatic difference, dramatic.
Well, I can see that, yeah.
And I want to just add a little caveat, caveat to what they've both said. They're, they're both being modest. Davidson County is one of the standards they hold up at the school of government because of how good we do this. At the classes that I've been with, when you say you're from Davidson County and they're talking about budgeting and performance-based budgeting, we are one of the top dogs down there that they, that they feel how, that we do it the right way.
I have had people come up to me at conferences, I think Commissioner McClure has too, at the managers, I mean, particularly at the Commissioners Conference, NCACC. I've had people come up to me and ask me, what, what is it? How does it work? What's the rules? Um, send me the rules. And then I usually send them one of these, you know, via PDF. And then I usually get a wow, that's, and then they want all, how do you do all that? How do you make it look like that? I mean, it goes on and on and on, so.
But one thing I've always liked in, it, it, when we were studying the animal shelter several years ago, we were, we needed to go out and we needed to look and see what other shelters are doing that could enhance us. And I think the goal of the board at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, was that at some point, I want other counties looking at Davidson County and say, what is Davidson County doing that we can utilize in our respective county? And I think we're seeing a lot of that right now. And it's, it's very rewarding to see that. When you see other counties now starting to look at Davidson County, how are you doing this? You know, I, I want to do it this way. We just attended the meeting last week in Raleigh with the various Commissioners. And I was standing outside talking to one of them and they were saying, uh, how did y'all do this? You know, this type, man, I'm sitting there just saying, oh, I love, this is exactly what we were referring to way back, you know?
Well, and.
How do we do this?
And, Mr. Chairman, with, if I may, with the, the PBB program, I, I can speak from a unique voice on that too. I worked in a jurisdiction that implemented a PBB program that modeled it directly after Davidson County. Um, the county management at the time there came here, met with the county management team that was here at the time. I believe it's all predates Casey as well. Um, they, they met and learned about this program from Davidson County. And, um, I, I, I can speak from, uh, having been a department director in that jurisdiction at the time. This program was implemented, it was, it was good for the department heads there. And, and it's something that I can appreciate and I think the, the department heads here appreciate too. The, the way this county does it, it is an example that people are envious of, absolutely.
It gives the department head some initiative
Yes.
in their own departments, rather than just coming in, working every day. They can look at stuff to, to do it better, perform better service to the folks. It actually came from Catawba County. And I went to one of those, um, seminars that they had and brought it back here. But, uh, Robert was county manager at the time and he tweaked it, um, to what it is, I guess. And it's been, uh, steadily improved since then. But it's, I think we started off with seven departments and we progressed to where we are now.
And I think one of the good things is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Sheila back over the library can attest to this. When they come up with something they want to get done, or Senior Services, Parks, uh, any of the members of the PBB, even though they have a project online that they want to spend their PBB funds for, it still comes to the Commissioners for approval. And sometime we tweaked it a little bit to make sure we're in line with being efficient with those dollars, you know? So it's not that, that they have free hand because it still comes back to the Board of Commissioners. And we usually work out, uh, the best solution, you know, to make things happen. And that's, that's called teamwork. That's the way it was supposed to work.
Commissioner, uh, one thing I'd like to say too as well, uh, I worked on yearbooks, um, uh, when I was teaching. And, um, the layout of this book and the pictures is outstanding. Uh, and that's coming from somebody that knew a little bit, not a lot, uh, but a little bit about design. And this is very impressive.
Easy to read.
Yes, I appreciate it. Appreciate it very much. And, and, um, Mr. Smith, this is a great picture of you on the first page.
I was just fixing to ask, do, do we get an autograph on this picture here?
Draft where my ear was cropped. It was the Van Gogh picture. It was a little, the ear was a little cropped out. We were going to leave that in there and see if y'all noticed I had one ear and one ear gone.
Okay, anybody have anything else on this? Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Uh, needs-based public school capital fund grant opportunity. Ms. Smith, would you take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've just recently got, uh, wonderful news from, uh, Dr. Wales, or a tip from Dr. Wales about a grant run out of, uh, DPI. It's called a Need-Based Public School Capital Fund Program Grant. Um, in, the Facilities Committee can appreciate this. In our conversations with Lexington and City Schools, still talking about looking at renovating parts of these schools up here, these grants are coming along at an opportune time. Uh, we've checked into the program. There's an application here. The application's a pretty short deadline to apply. It's got to be in by March fifteenth. You can apply for up to forty million dollars for a middle school and fifty million dollars for a high school. With us, the match requirements are different, but for Davidson County, it's fifteen percent. Um, and so I.
Is it fifteen percent or zero thirty?
It was zero thirty, but every county's got their own prescribed percentage. I just pulled the PDF. So for us, it's fifteen, right. Um, we, Tim Manus out of our office, and he's not here today, he's not feeling well. Um, he's kind of talked to these guys down there a little bit about the ins and outs of the program. You know, who, how they're going to do their selections, because it's not only a quick application turnaround, it's going to be a quick response about whether you get an award or not. Um, they, uh, you know, they may, parts of this, we'll just have to see if we, if we're available to apply. You know, we, we're in a great financial position. Our, our financials show that. I don't know how, if that'll work against us actually in trying to apply for grants of these sizes. But I see no downside in applying for this for fifteen percent. You know, some of the costs we've been looking at for renovating these schools is the two, well, the three members of the Facilities Committee can attest to, big numbers. Uh, it sure would be nice to get an award of a grant that we only have to come up with fifteen percent. We just knocked our costs down some. So, um, I told Dr. Wales, if the board's amenable to it, my staff can handle applying for it. It's not a very complex grant, doesn't appear to be. I don't have a problem with submitting it and see where we go from there.
What's your timeline on it?
I got to have it in by March fifteenth.
They make a decision a month later on?
Yep.
Let's roll with it.
Yeah.
I don't, I agree.
Yeah, I think it puts us way ahead of the game.
Absolutely. I didn't see any downside.
I don't.
Okay.
You. That's common consent, all I need. We'll, we'll take it from here. We're going to get it, we're going to get it and submit it and move on.
Am I opposed to it?
Yeah.
No.
Good.
You got what you need there, Casey?
Sir.
Okay. Uh, discussion about conflict of interest policy, Mr. Smith?
I'm going to turn this one over to Mr. Martin. Um, he and Chuck have been working on this, um, in relation to, I will, we'll say this before I tee it up. This is in relation to, let me do this part, Jason, I'll teach you, let you do the specifics. We've gotten two, notification of two specific grants that we received as part of the state budget. One for eighty-four thousand for the sheriff's office, um, and that's the one that, that brought the impetus for this item this morning. And then we've gotten notification of five hundred thousand dollars that's pushed in the governor's budget. That's running through Senator Jarvis's side of the house, um, in General Assembly, that will come with some prescriptions on how to spend the funds. In other words, we're a pass-through to do, do it for other things. We've done that in the past. As you remember, we were a pass-through to help the, uh, the folks that bought the building down here, the animal group. I can't remember their name now. Humane Society. The Humane Society bought the building down here. If you remember, Mr. Representative Potts got us money, we helped with that. And we were the reporting agency. So I don't have the details on the five hundred thousand right now. It will require this conflict of interest policy. Jason's going to share with you in just a minute. Both grants do. This is more for the eighty-four now, which as I understand it, Sheriff is looking at additional body cams. But Jason, go ahead, I'm going to let you explain to them why this is on the agenda.
Yeah, like, like Casey was explaining, this is directly tied to grants of state funds. And this is something that is part of the process of, of receiving the funds and part of the reporting. They're requesting, uh, any kind of conflict of interest policy. They're requiring conflict of interest policy, um, for, for the county or for any sub recipients. Um, and in, in our case, we would be the only one receiving money. So, um, we do have some general things already on the books, um, within our personnel policy regarding gifts and favors. I know Dwayne has some in his purchasing policies, uh, and then of course, UG, uh, Uniform Guidance Policies. But, um, this would be more specific for, for grants, very specific for state grants. Um, and it's very straightforward. What they're requesting in this is to, how, set up a process of how a conflict of interest is disclosed, um, of what the remedy is for, for that. And it would apply to any board members, to employees, um, to advisory board members as well. Um, and then also any kind of enforcement on that, you know? If it was a county employee that had a conflict of interest, for example, if I, I had a conflict of interest and there was something going on with an award and it's a family member's business getting it, um, I would need to disclose that, step away from that process. Um, Um, and then if, from an enforcement standpoint, we do have enforcement measures built into our personnel policy for that. Um, the state gave us a, a sample policy, which I shared with Chuck, and I think we both pretty much agreed. We didn't, we wanted to tweak it and make it more ours. Um, and I'll let Chuck kinda walk through the, the legal aspects of this a little bit, if you have something to add to it.
From the standpoint of conflict of interest, there's really nothing novel or unfamiliar to you. But this specific policy is coming to you just because of a requirement of state law that is being pulled out in request for these grants. This is just another box we've gotta check off. It specifically says in the state law that there have to be provisions as to how those conflicts are reported. And that's something we didn't have and isn't otherwise covered in the law. And that's in the final, the second paragraph under conflict of interest. And then they also, um, stated that, uh, we, needs to be some provision that there are some teeth in this. That a person who violates the conflict of interest policy would be subject to disciplinary action under our personnel resolution. That has got to be in the policy, so we've stated that. So what we're really doing here is just checking off some hoops. The general concept of conflict of interest and of your responsibility, specifically as commissioners, that's nothing new to you. The policy that was sent by the state, or the template that was sent by the state, was inappropriate for us. It was really designed to be used by nonprofit organizations. In the last week, there had been some discussion on the local government listserv by counties that were in the same place we are in trying to find a policy. And I need to, um, to recognize my colleague, uh, in Jackson County, who had, I think, been through a more laborious process with the state last year. And, uh, we ended up using the, uh, their policy as sort of a template for what we ended up with. I'm not saying that this is going to placate the state. At this point, uh, we've got an, a tentative check-off on this. But, um, we may be back in front of you, we may have to tweak it a little bit more to, uh, to satisfy their needs. Uh, but, uh, this is really nothing novel from the general concept of conflict of interest. It just has a couple of pieces of language in it that are to, uh, to meet the general statute for state grants.
We, we have no, we have no match requirements with these grants. And from here, for the eighty-four thousand, should the conflict of interest policy be approved, we are to upload to the state, you know, the scope of work is the last piece remaining. So we can load that up for the body camera part of the eighty-four. I'm not gonna move on the five hundred just yet because I'm still waiting at, uh, Senator Jarvis, a conversation with him about, a little bit more about these prescription and where these funds have got to go. Chuck is right, we think the impetus for this may have come from some of the coronavirus funds. I think it was publicly known that they, uh, the State Auditor's Office had an issue with parts of how NC Pro handled that. They had this on the books forever, and apparently just, um, either wasn't enforcing it or didn't ask counties to submit and cities to submit these things. So here we are now, they're gonna do it with these sets of grants, so that's basically why this is before you.
And this is state, is that for state grants?
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't we have a policy such as this for all business of the county commissioners?
I, I would suggest to you that we do. And I think that there's also separate law that talks about your responsibility as a commissioner in, in self-dealing or self-serving. Um, this policy comes before you. I think that, that, the, the idea about self-interest and the conflict against self-interest, I think that's already there.
Yeah.
What we're doing with this is meeting some language that the state wants specifically with regard to if you have a conflict, how you're required to report that conflict. And also an acknowledgement that if there is a conflict, it would subject the employee to particu- to potential disciplinary action under our personnel resolution.
I know yearly and free progress panelists, because it's been a while, but the MPO, if you were on that in high point, every year you have to fill out exactly what you just said, so, uh.
And it was the Thomasville Medical Center too, you have to, every, it's a formal, uh, survey that you have to fill out, revealing any conflicts of interest or any things that could be a conflict of interest.
Oh, and Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may add to Chuck's point, I believe this is more specific for, to checking specific checkboxes for the state. Um, I mean, we've got other policies within the county that we would have to cobble together to kinda make this happen. I think, just to be blunt, I think it's, they wanna see it in a nice, simple format that they have.
And if they were supposed to send it out as part of the coronavirus funds and didn't do it, and Beth Wood's office called them, that's why you're getting it forced now. You, you know, they've caught on to, oh, well, we were supposed to send this out, and, uh, I mean, it's like, it's-
I can, I certainly understand the responsibility's aligned with dispersment.
Right.
These are the same laws we've been governed by.
It's an acknowledgement now that everybody knows, you know.
Same laws, just in a different format, and they want it signed, so I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, um, resolution clarifying powers and duties.
Second. Okay, we got a motion in a second. You got noted on that, Debbie?
Yes, I do.
Okay, pass your vote.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries five votes, five to zero.
Okay. Resolution clarifying the powers and duties of Davis County Board of Equalization and Review. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, I'm gonna ask you to, Mr. Howell to come up, um, uh, he works in Chuck's office, um, down in the Tax Department, helping, uh, David Ricker out. We've got, and I'm gonna tee it up, and I'm gonna let you explain to them why it's on this. So we've got an, uh, a discovery from a major company in county that's under dispute. And, you know, we feel like this is probably headed to, uh, the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh at some point in time. Um, Andrew uncovered an old, I think it's what, two decades old, resolution from the Board of E and R that would allow them to call special meetings to hear this dispute. Um, but this resolution has not been updated in so long. The idea behind this is to go ahead and approve a new resolution, allowing them to call a special meeting to handle this issue. Uh, as it appears, again, it may end up its way in Raleigh. Um, and that's basically it. We're, we're looking to update this resolution, but without that power granted to them by this board, uh, we, you know, we weren't any way to do it, so I'll let you. And I don't know, if I stole all the thunder, I didn't mean to. Generally speaking, and actually, if I may, Commissioners, hand you something, I'm not sure quite what you have, but I'm, that way you can kinda see what we're talking about here.
I don't believe I've met you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi. I, I apologize to the members of the board. Um, Andrew has been with us for how long now, sir?
About six months.
And, uh, he primarily works, um, with, uh, David Ricker down in the Tax Department. His office is down there. Uh, he also has been sort of our utility infielder recently in handling other matters, uh, that have come before the board. I, I may recall having seen him on, on one prior occasion here. His, uh, I'm, I'm very proud to share that he is a graduate of the Wake Forest University School of Law.
Oh, that's a lot of lawyers.
Which is the foundation for all good lawyers. And, uh, had, uh, worked with a firm in Charlotte for some years before, um, he, he came to work for us. I've also gotta say one other thing of a personal note. Andrew was a teacher in the, uh, Roman County School System before he went back to law school. And, uh, and I, I think, um, being a teacher is a good foundation for being an attorney because, uh, that's what a lot of being a lawyer is all about. And so forgive me for, for saying quite that much, but, uh, this is a, a sort of a, a novel, narrow legal issue, but one that the board needs to sign off on so that they can go forward with this tax appeal.
And this is nothing any different we've been doing in the past, you just want us to approve this new resolution, correct?
Well, we, Board of, the Board of E and R's gonna call a special meeting, but the resolution grants them the authority to do that. The resolution, the twenty-two-year-old one, doesn't recognize that process, I guess is the best way to say it.
Exactly, yeah.
So they just don't, um, it don't, they don't have the authority to, to call a special meeting? Is that the only difference?
When this resolution, the, the, I guess the most recent board resolution dealing with the Board of E and R was passed, um, actually in the eighties. Um, actually, that's what you, you have a copy of. Um, the authority granted by state law for the Board of E and R, for any local board, this one or any other county, to meet for these types of proceedings did not exist. Um, and that was added to the statute, which you also have a copy of, and I've highlighted on the, the back page. Um, that addition was made, um, in the early two thousands. It gave, uh, Boards of Commissioners the authority to grant Boards of E and R the ability to, to meet and call these special meetings outside of the traditional calendar. Um, so it doesn't change anything about what the Board of E and R actually already does. It doesn't change their calendar, it doesn't change, it doesn't grant taxpayers the ability to show up and say, I appeal. The only thing this does is it allows the Board of E and R to say, hey, we have this, this unique issue. It's outside of our traditional calendar, let's call ourselves in a session and hear this, so it, it doesn't have to be handled in some other way in accordance with law. That's, that's essentially just giving-
Essentially what you're doing, you're removing the Board of Commissioners from the picture.
From this, on this narrow issue of discovery, and an appeal from a discovery, yes, sir, that's correct.
I don't know that, with all respect, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that it removes them as much as you are delegating
Yeah, you're delegating.
that, that responsibility to the Board of E and R, um, that-
That's, that's going around the world to get to barbecue center. I know what you're saying.
And that's what lawyers do, sir, yeah.
But, but, wait a minute, this is still the job that they done, they just done it on their calendar date. We're just giving them the authority-
To call a special meeting.
To call a special meeting.
A special meeting, so it's nothing that-
Without the Commissioners giving, doing, taking that role, right?
Exactly, exactly. And this is, and the unique factual aspect of this is that this appeal will, if it happens, and it likely will happen, happens outside of the traditional meeting calendar of the Board of E and R.
How often do y'all meet?
Traditionally, they start in, in April, and they meet until their business is resolved. I think typically by statute, uh, in early July, they have a calendar they publish. Um, so it's a very narrow window of time they normally meet. Um, and so if, if this appeal had happened, or, you know, would happen in May, this is of no effect. It does, it, it's within the normal scope of their duties. Um, and so as a practical matter, this may never happen again. It's, it's just a unique factual situation that, that we need to address, or at least we, we propose to address by this resolution.
Final conclusion, they're gonna make the final decision anyway, correct?
If it goes to the Property Tax Commission, yes, sir.
So if it's something they need to review, they have to call a special meeting, they don't have a power to do that right now.
They do not, that's correct.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Any other?
You're right. Got a motion second, cast your vote.
Thank you.
Reason I was asking this question, I just wanna understand exactly what was, what our role, what was, what, what we were deferring.
Absolutely.
All of the votes are in on that, and that motion carries five votes, five to zero.
Okay. Okay, approval of contract between Senior Planet and Senior Service. Ms. Christie Smith will lead this off.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in December of, um, last year, Senior Services applied to participate in the second enrollment period for Senior Planet Licensing Program. Senior Planet is in partnership with, um, Oats, which is older adult technology services, and they're both under the umbrella of AARP now. Um, they provide a number of senior technology courses, and participating in this pilot program would allow staff, specified staff, and some of our volunteers to access to this curriculum and also receive training from them to be able to lead these classes. So in late January, we were notified that we were accepted into this pilot program. Um, we have a deadline of February the eleventh to have the contract submitted in order for the staff and, um, volunteers to receive this training that begins February the fourteenth. So due to this time constraint, we are asking that the board consider the approval of this contract this morning.
And it's no cost to the county, I understand.
Correct, correct.
How do they train you, online?
It is online training, yes, live, online training.
How many, how many people will take advantage of this, uh?
We have three staff and one volunteer.
How long does the training last?
It's a month, month-long. So we'll be able, we're training through February into early March, and then we'll begin in late March with offering the curriculum.
Do you train at your own convenience, or do you have to-
No, it's scheduled, scheduled whatever.
How many days a week training?
It's two days a week for four weeks.
Oh, awesome. All right, good luck with that, maybe y'all can teach me some, uh, technology when you get done.
If I understand right, your first day of class would be February eleventh.
Fourteenth or something, thirteen?
The fourteenth will be our first training, yes.
Fourteen, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't seem to be any downside to this at all. I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Good thing.
Got a motion in second? Cast your vote.
Susan, it? Now, he, we got he.
Carries five votes, five to zero. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it was already in there, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, it already.
May I have a motion in second to adjourn?
Motion, good test.
Second, thank you, man.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.